Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 19, 2011, meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please. Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brendel.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and we approve the meeting agenda in its printed format discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. Next, we have the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and we adopt the consent agenda. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. Well, moving right to a special recognition and presentation section of the agenda, and we are pleased to have with us this evening Decision Resources Manager Neil. Do you want to introduce the topic?
Thank you, Your Honor, I will. Earlier this year, or else I'll start the story late last year, we had some discussion with the city council about conducting a quality of life survey. And when you do that kind of thing in the Twin Cities, there is a preeminent group of folks that do that, and it's called the Decision Resources Team. And we have a couple of representatives from there this evening. Dr. Bill Morris, who I think is going to do the presentation, and Peter Leatherman. Peter was our primary contact throughout the creation of the survey and the implementation of the survey, and now helping us also with the interpretation of the results. I won't steal any of Dr. Morris's thunder, except to tell you that we had an exceptionally positive survey result and outcome, and I'll let him tell you the rest.
Well, welcome, Dr. Morris.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you.
Nice to see you. Unless you want to use the overhead.
No, we can all.
All right, then I would suggest, yeah, that's good.
I'll just walk her around.
Have you reintroduce yourself, and give us the name of your business and your business address, please.
Excellent. William Morris, Decision Resources Limited. I'm the president, and we are located at 3128 Dean Court in Minneapolis. What I'm going to be discussing tonight is the survey of 400 households that was conducted across Adana. We had a non-response rate of less than 4 percent. That is, when people understood that we weren't going to sell them anything, they were more than willing to talk to us. The average amount of time it took to complete a survey was 26 minutes, although we did have 9 percent of your residents stay on the phone with us for over one hour. The demographics questions that we asked were then compared to the currently updated census, and we found that we were within plus or minus 5 percent on each of those variables. In fact, the projectability of this to an entire adult census of the community would be to within plus or minus 5 percent. Let's talk first about city demographics. And although I could make some comparisons with the last survey that we did for the city of Adana, it was in 1999, so it was looking at it roughly half a generation ago. Some things have changed, and I'll make reference to them, but much has stayed pretty much the same. And that survey was undoubtedly one of the best surveys in terms of the results that we had back in 1999 through the entire decade following. And this survey, we'll see, is going to be just in that position again. With respect to city demographics, the average amount of time an adult resident has spent in the community is just shy of 20 years, 19.6 years. 35 percent of your households contain seniors; 31 percent of your households contain school-aged children or preschoolers. The average age in the community is approximately 55 years old. And finally, with respect to average income, the median income in the community is about The major change here from 11 years ago is that we have more folks that have been here for over 20 years. Not surprisingly, given stability has always been one of the characteristics of this community. And also, the age has changed somewhat, with an uptick in the number of folks that are over the age of 65. That now is 28 percent of the community, just over one quarter. Let's begin first with a question that we ask in just about every suburban community in which we survey. And I might add that our database now has approximately 100 metropolitan area suburbs contained within it. We asked about the quality of life. Is it excellent, good, only fair, or poor? 90 percent of your residents told us it was excellent. Good was at 9 percent; 1 percent said only fair. What is stunning about this is the 90 percent. We have no other community that comes close to a 90 percent excellent rating. The excellent and good, the positive ratings are at 99. Certainly, we have communities, we've worked with communities, that have 98, 97 percent, but not that balance that you have here of excellent to good. That 10-to-1 ratio is the strongest that we've seen anywhere, and to have just 1 percent who are more critical also sets a record. Now, let's put this into perspective. If we take a look at surveys that we've undertaken during the past couple of years, we call these our best practices cities. Adana, at 90 percent, we've already talked about. The next one is your neighbor, St. Louis Park. It's 77 percent excellent. But there, the characteristics that make that city excellent are far different from the types of things that people mention when they talk about Adana. Minnetonka, then, starts down about 20 points lower at 55 percent, Shoreview at 55 percent, and Woodbury at 53 percent. We then move down below a majority, but just a bit, with Eden Prairie and with Eagan, both at 47 percent. Just to complete it, I'm not going to tell you which community it is, but our low on this is a 6 percent excellent rating. So we actually span from 6 percent up to 90 percent across metro. What do people like most about Adana? We asked this question before we considered any particular topic. That is, this was asked early enough in the survey where we didn't have people focus on anything for us. This is also open-ended, so this is a top-of-the-mind response. 25 percent indicated it's a convenient location for everything that they care about, whether it be family, whether it be shopping, whether it be church or synagogue, whether it be activities for the kids in the household. But convenient location at 25 percent is a typical response that we find in most inner-ring suburban communities. Strong neighborhoods and solid housing at 13 percent was mentioned next. And then we have close friends and family being here, good schools also at 10 percent, and at 9 percent close to shopping. It then trails off somewhat, but by and large, unlike a number of other communities, in particular in that list that you just saw, best practices communities, there's no one thing that people like most. There's a whole array of things that people think of when they think of what they value most in the community. Well, if we're going to ask what they like most, we should ask what's the most serious issue. And there were two that were over 10 percent. I should indicate to you that how we judge this, we consider a most serious issue, and again, this is open-ended, to be a volatile issue if it hits 30 percent being mentioned. We consider it to be a major issue at 20 percent. At 10 percent, we consider it to be a pre-issue or one that needs to be watched, but certainly not as urgent as responses that receive higher percentages. So what are the two that come in almost evenly? Lack of redevelopment, and in particular, people were talking about the Southdale area, and then high taxes at 12 percent. To put that into perspective for you, the high taxes at 12 percent is lower than what we find in most suburban communities. In most suburban communities, that's been hitting 24 and 25 percent. So it's about one-half what we would have expected to see. Poor roads are mentioned by 9 percent, and that's a response that we're finding right across the metro area. School district funding at 6, and rising crime at 6. But again, nothing really stands out as a key burning issue with respect to the community. The two that need bear watching in the future are lack of redevelopment and high taxes. How do people feel about the direction the community is going in? 92 percent indicated they thought the community was going in the right direction. That's the high that we have across the metropolitan area. Wrong track was mentioned by 7 percent, and uncertainty, that is, they were unsure about the direction, was mentioned by only 1 percent. When we took a look at wrong track in a little bit more depth, what we found was people pointed, again, to redevelopment and to the tax situation. But the 92 percent indicates a general and strong consensus with respect to the way the city is going. City services are next. And let me preface this by a comment about the general chart itself. What we're hoping to see here is an ocean of blue. The blue bars represent excellent and good ratings. The red, or the red tide, represent negative ratings, only fair and poor. So if we begin at the top, you'll also notice that we have a lot in the 90 percent category with respect to positive ratings. So police protection, fire protection, emergency medical service. And please note, on emergency medical service, no one gave it a negative rating. It was simply 10 percent had no experience with it, and so were unable to rate. 97 percent sanitary sewers, 92 percent stormwater runoff, 98 percent, a very, very solid rating of park maintenance. The condition of trails and sidewalks, 93. I guess we could consider recreational programs to be close enough at 89. Recycling services at 95, snow plowing on city streets, and lighting on city streets, both at 95. Now, a couple of things are unique to this community. First off, street lighting has only 4 percent indicating a negative rating. The universal constant on that across the metropolitan area, except for Adana, is 20 percent negative, regardless of where we survey. One in five people are just dissatisfied with the amount of street lighting. Second thing is repair and patching of city streets, 50 percent to 50 percent. That indicates a fair amount of negative evaluations. Keep in mind, though, that across the metro area now, that's at 45, 55, 45 percent favorable to 55 percent unfavorable. So you're a little bit ahead of the suburban norm. Most people tend not to rate the repair and patching of city streets highly at all in comparison to other city services. And then finally, the quality and taste of water. 28 percent indicated that was a problem. That's a little bit higher than what we've seen in some communities, and it came out of your south, primarily out of the southeast quadrant of the city. The northeast quadrant also indicated some problems with this.
Was there any other word they used in describing the pick to give us any idea of what it is? Hardness, because we have hard water, and not? No? Nothing else?
No, for the most part, they concentrated on the taste rather than hardness. Perception of city property taxes? Well, 44 percent feel that property taxes here are either very high or somewhat high. 37 percent see them as average, and you actually have 7 percent who see them as somewhat or very low. The 44 percent indicating very high or somewhat high would indicate that you have a moderately hostile tax climate. Not a very hostile tax climate. Minnetonka sits at 70 percent, very high and somewhat high. Chanhassen is close to 80 percent. That's what we consider to be a hostile tax climate. But nevertheless, property taxes are a concern, and if we go back to the other charts for a moment, you'll notice that 12 percent, top-of-the-mind, indicated that as one thing that they did not like about the community. Well, what about the value of city services? We've seen they're rated highly. We've seen that the property tax climate is moderately hostile. But when they take a look at the value of services, the quality of the services for the taxes they pay, a very high 82 percent feel that it's excellent or good value for the dollar. Only 7 percent rate that lower. We have a curmudgeon rule on this question. Very rarely do you see any community with less than 10 percent, even 15 percent, rating the value of city services as only fair or poor. So the ratio, then, of 82 to 7 is one of the highest that we have across metro. Would people support a tax increase to maintain city services at their current level? This question is all over the board in terms of the results that we get across the metro area. In some communities, it's 2 to 1 opposed; in other communities, it's 60, 40 in favor. Here, the plurality is in favor, 45 percent, but 36 percent still are opposed, and 20 percent just are unsure. They told us they'd have to know more about where the additional money would go. There were particular services they would like to see it spent on. But the 45 to 36, again, is higher than the norm that we're currently finding. Tax increases are not that popular, particularly coming out of the last gubernatorial race. City characteristics. This chart takes a look at development, what people would like to see more of, what they feel that there's enough of, and finally, what they would like to see less of or feel there's too many. We use a stoplight metaphor for this. The red indicates the percent of people who feel that you have too many of that particular opportunity. The about right is yellow, indicating caution, and the green is indicating too few. That is, they would like to see more of them. Well, if we go down the chart for a moment, you'll see that yellow is in the majority on every one of these. Some not as high, the number of residents, for example, 94 percent are very comfortable with the current number. And that goes down to, I believe, a 53 percent with respect to one-level senior housing. In terms of too many, folks are sensitive to a couple of things, but not as sensitive as we found in some of your neighboring communities. So for example, 14 percent feel that perhaps there's too much higher-cost housing in the community. 10 percent worry about rental units, and 8 percent indicate they feel there are too many condominiums and townhouses. What we found across the metropolitan area is there is a concern at about 10 to 15 percent, not as strong as it is here, with respect to condominiums and townhomes. That tends to be a trait right across the suburbs. Now, what would people like to see more of? And here, we have two clusters. One has to do with starter homes. They would like to see homes that, in fact, many of them said that their kids could move into when they start families. 30 percent indicated that they would like to see more of those brought to Adana. It was interesting to us that the strongest support for this came from over 55-year-olds, who indicated they would love to have their children and grandchildren move back into the community. The next cluster, though, has to do with assisted senior living opportunities, nursing homes, and one-level senior housing run by an association. The assisted living, nursing homes, and one-level housing tends to be something that most suburban communities over the past two years have indicated an interest in. Again, that forms its own cluster, not as strong as starter homes, but nevertheless indicates a priority. What was also of interest in this one was the strongest priority, that is, the strongest need was expressed by those under the age of 45. That is, they want to be able to see their parents either move back into the community or be able to stay in the community. One other thing with respect to sidewalks, no one thought there were too many. 20 percent thought there were too few, and that came from particular parts of the city which correlate to areas that don't have the sidewalks, that don't have sidewalks currently. Service and retail opportunities, which is very big in most communities as a want, and entertainment and dining establishments, also very big in surrounding communities, don't come through at all, at 4 percent and 7 percent indicating that you have too few, and 2 and 3 percent indicating that you have too many. Just the right number. How do people feel about redevelopment in the city? 59 percent rate the redevelopment favorably, either excellent or good. 25 percent, however, feel it's only fair or poor. And again, it tends to be lagging redevelopment, and Southdale is one area that did come up again as someplace that people feel that more redevelopment is essential. Are residents willing to go for financial incentives to attract particular types of redevelopment? 56 percent indicated they would support financial incentives for targeted redevelopment, while 26 percent indicated they would oppose. That's a 2-to-1 margin. 18 percent, about one in five, though, were unsure. So we would call that a cautious endorsement of the use of financial incentives for redevelopment. In a number of other communities, we've found the support for financial incentives runs as high as 60 to 70 percent. Let's talk about public safety for a moment. What are the most serious public safety issues facing the community? Well, 26 percent indicated burglary, and 13 percent indicated speeding and traffic violations. What is not present, however, is a major concern about underage drinking, juvenile crime, personal safety, drugs, or identity theft. All of these came in in single digits. 1 percent suggested a couple of other public safety issues, but they were very, very idiosyncratic. The key on this, though, is you had 35 percent that said to us, none of these are a serious issue as far as we're concerned. That's one of the highest responses we have metro-wide in terms of just not seeing public safety issues as being all that serious. If there is a concern, we would point to burglary as one that might want to be discussed and dealt with. Empowerment. Do people feel they can have a say about the way Adana runs things other than through elections? 78 percent indicated yes. That's 20 points higher than the norm across the metropolitan area suburbs. Only 15 percent indicated no, that's about half of the norm, and 7 percent were unsure. The empowerment issue revolves around, when we ask those people who said no why they felt that way, it's not so much the decision process as the outcome of the decision process. It's how the decision was finally made, the substance of the decision, rather than the process at arriving at it. But again, the 78 percent is among the highest two cities that we have across metro, on the feeling of being empowered. City staff ratings are at the top of the range. 91 percent rate city staff as either excellent or good; only 6 percent rate it as only fair or poor, and 3 percent were unsure. The 6 percent is one of the lowest that we have anywhere. Again, invoking the curmudgeon rule of thumb, we would have expected to see that at least 10 percent. But the flat-out 91 percent positive is the high, pretty much solidly so of any other Where do people get their information from? Well, there is one key source, one major source, and that's the Adana newspaper. 45 percent indicate that that's their principal source of information. Now, keep in mind that we asked this in an open-ended fashion. That is, we didn't suggest any responses at this point in time, nor had we discussed any of the other ways that people might get information. After that, the city newsletter, a respectable 22 percent. The website at 9 percent, and you do have a fairly solid grapevine. Word of mouth was cited by 8 percent. And in fact, there was a real generational theme to that one. Residents older than 55 tended to be the ones that were more often relying upon the grapevine for their information about the city. Cable TV came in at 6 percent. That's higher than the norm. Usually, we see that coming in at 2 or 3 percent. In some cities, over the past couple of months, we've had to reluctantly inform them that not even their spouses appear to be watching the programs. And the Star Tribune is mentioned by 3 percent. The scattered include such things as billboards, moving signs, and that sort of thing, kind of USA Today news sources. And mailings were mentioned by 3 percent. You do have a fairly concentrated information or communications network, with the local newspaper and city newsletter being the primary source of information for two-thirds of your community. We took a look at the city newsletter next and asked people whether or not they received it. 88 percent reported they had; 12 percent reported they don't recall receiving it. We then asked whether or not they regularly read the city newsletter. 90 percent of those receiving it did so on a regular basis; 10 percent did not. The reach of your city newsletter is a very enviable 79 percent of the households in the community, and that's one of the highest reaches that we have anywhere. The city website. Well, first, only 79 percent of households have access at home to the Internet. That's lower than the suburban norm. The suburban norm on this is closer to 85 percent, even closer to 90 percent. But keep in mind that there is a technological divide in terms of folks over the age of 50 and folks under the age of 50. So the 79 percent is something we would have expected to see, given demographics here. Had they accessed the Adana website? Yes. Of those that had the Internet, 58 percent of them indicated that they had been to the website. Well, of course, if we have people who have been to the website, we should ask them a couple of questions. That's a reward for telling us they had been there. The content was rated very, very favorably, 94 percent to 6 percent negative. And navigating, you've done the impossible here, 94 percent to 6 percent negative. Normally, across the metropolitan area on city websites, we expect to see a negative of between 15 and 25 percent. Folks here, though, are very, very happy with the ability to navigate. Most people want to have one click to go to any place within the website rather than having to undertake numerous multiple clicks. So what can we say, then, about the report? Well, I'd like to end the report. Obviously, this is an extremely positive and consistently positive showing. Residents here are very, very satisfied with their community. They support the general direction in which it's going. City service ratings are extremely high. City employees maybe not beloved, but certainly appreciated. And with respect to problems, a couple. Roads certainly need to be looked at, but that's a concern right across the metro area. Tax resistance is not as high here as we've seen in other parts of the metropolitan area. And redevelopment, in particular, certain areas of the city also are a concern. But in general, let me finish with an anecdote. When Decision Resources first opened in 1983, we called around, we were new, and called city managers in order to just establish ourselves, prospecting, if you will. The city manager at the time, when we asked him, told him what we did, told us that Adana really didn't need a quality-of-life survey because you defined the quality of life. In 1999, Gordon invited us to come in and to undertake a survey, and lo and behold, what did we find? Yes, there was some truth to that, that you did define the quality of life. At that time, 81 percent rated the quality of life here excellent, again, far ahead of any other community across metro. This time, however, we have now corroborating evidence. It's been 11 years since the last survey, and I wouldn't say to correct the former city manager that you defined the quality of life, but I really think you're the pace setters for the quality of life across the metropolitan area. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Questions for Dr. Morris? Member Swenson?
How often do other communities, if they were to use your services? I mean, it's been 11, 12 years since our last one. Is 10 years average, is 15, is 5, or there really isn't an average? I mean, how long? You know, obviously, you want to do business with us, so you'd like to tell me one, but in your judgment, looking at other communities and looking at data, what would you tell us?
That's fair. In communities that are undergoing growth, we tend to go back once every two years, which makes sense when they've got housing divisions coming online and that sort of thing. In more stable communities, it goes three to four years. And then we do have an occasional community. You don't have the record in terms of repeat or lack of repeat business from us. New Brighton, in fact, goes systematically every 15 years. So it does vary, but you might be looking, given the community, perhaps considering But you might be looking, given the community, perhaps considering three to four years.
Other questions? Member Brendel?
Thank you for that recap. I've been going through this. Joni and I had lunch recently, and we talked about the survey, and we're looking at, all right, what's our age category and what are our answers? And by and large, we should be very proud of what we're doing and very happy with our community for taking part in the survey, but also giving us such positive information. Of the cities that were identified, when you had the cities all lined up next to each other, did they all do a survey this year?
They did within the past 18 months.
Okay. All right. So that's pretty current.
Yes.
So it's comparable. Recently, there was an article in a newspaper that highlighted St. Louis Park and described they were, the residents were described as giddy. So I couldn't wait to see these numbers. If St. Louis Park's residents were that happy, I thought, well, I've got to see what Edina said. So I appreciate this very much. And a call out to our residents to thank you very much for taking part.
Thanks.
Doctor, a couple of questions. The index that Member Brendel was referring to of other cities, how many cities are in the index that's used for benchmarking?
For benchmarking? I'd say we use 25 to 30. And they have to be current. That is, we try to keep it within the past two years among our clients, although occasionally we will extend that to three.
And are the benchmarking statistics available with the full report that we're going to receive?
You will have the comparison in terms of what the norm is and where you are. So as a result, we will be talking about how, what, how many percent the positive rating is above, or the negative rating is below, in your case.
So it's not percentile in the index? Like you're the 99th percentile, it's more of plus or minus the average? Is that how it's expressed?
No, we do it in terms of, we can't use percentiles, because we don't work with every city across the metropolitan area. So that would kind of be deceptive, on our point of view. What we do instead is take a look at, for benchmarking, is take a look at where the community is in rank, in terms of our clients. And then we also keep a running average on most of the questions, which are tracking questions for most communities. So we're able to speak to how much above or below that norm you tend to be.
And do you recall offhand what the top three empowerment cities were? Or what was the top?
St. Louis Park was very, very high.
They're almost exactly the same.
Thank you.
Joni, Member Bennett?
More in the nature of comments. This is delightful. I have been hoping for this kind of information for years, and it's really, it's so helpful to have it, and the timing is so good. We have the census, which gives us that coincidence of government-collected data with the survey data. We also have some financial information, performance in the community. We know of some needs in the community. And we have the 99 survey to look back on, understanding that it's a different generation. We have a park needs survey, a recreational needs survey that was done in conjunction with preparing for our comprehensive plan revision. And you have given us so much information now to correlate with those other pieces of information and to use to move forward. And I intend to strongly advocate that we repeat this within that three to four-year recommended period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will finish with an anecdote for you. At the Regional Council Mayor's meeting last Monday, we, at the end of the meeting, we go around the circle, and people talk about what's going on in their town. And as we came around the loop, I'm the co-chair, along with the mayor of Shoreview, Sandy Martin, who's a, which is, that city's also a client of yours. And so she dragged out the survey from Edina and said, I don't know what they're doing over there, but there's something rigged up here, you know? And proceeded to give me a hard time, but it was, everybody got a kick out of it. But I think they recognize that we have a good town, and everybody here on this council works hard for this town. That's the only reason they work hard. There's no personal agendas here. The years I've been on the council, everybody wanted one thing, and that was make Edina a better place to live for everybody that lives here. So it's nice to see some of these things reflected in a quality-of-life survey, and we look forward to working hard at it in the future, too.
Well, it's very clear that people do appreciate the city's efforts. Otherwise, you wouldn't have percentages that high right across the board. Thank you.
Thanks.
And, you know, as you recognize the council working here, let's also recognize our employees, because they were definitely a part of this survey. And we didn't, you did not put any black marks on any of the areas that need improvement. Our employees do a great job, so I don't think we should forget them.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great comment. I think I was just on the council when you did the other survey, and our staff got a great approval rating from the residents at that point in time, too, and it continues to be so.
Absolutely.
Highly regarded. Jack, you might want to be loved, but you're highly regarded.
And Manager Neil, just talking about the frequency of the surveys, when would we discuss that as a body?
I think you'll discuss that as a body probably during the budget process, you know, if not this year, next year. My work in the past has been to do them every two years. I understand that was in a different community, they had a different growth pattern, so. But one of the benefits of doing it, and Councilmember Bennett hit on it, too, is having these results at about this time, or maybe even a little earlier in the year, you can really use them to begin doing some analysis for the budget process. And that really, for us, from a staff standpoint, is what is important to us. You know, the good ratings are important, too, but learning from this and learning how we can improve what we do in quality of life here is really what we're all about, and that's how this survey is important.
Well, as I understand it, this is just one component of a global performance management system. If you're going to use that system to guide the budgetary process, obviously, you're going to have to do this in conjunction with that.
Thanks, Dr. Morris. All right. Tuck my survey results aside here, and we're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the public hearing portion. We have one public hearing matter tonight, and it is a proposed site plan amendment for the facility on York Avenue, 35, I guess I actually use the address of 3451 Park Lawn Avenue, York Gardens. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this property is located down in the southeast corner of the city. It's adjacent to the 7500 York Senior Housing Project, next to the recently constructed 76 unit, four-story senior building on that site. The applicant had installed an air conditioning unit on the west side of that new, of the new building. This unit was not shown on the site plans that were reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council. It wasn't shown on the building permit plans that were also reviewed by staff. By definition, this air conditioning unit that you see on the screen here, a couple of views of it, is a structure by definition. And it was installed, again, on the west side of the building, with a 17-foot setback in its current location. A 35 feet is the required setback. The applicant had initially applied for a variance to maintain that existing location. They've since withdrawn that request and are agreeable to, and are proposing this evening, to relocate the, that unit to the east side of the building. So therefore, the council is only considering a site plan amendment this evening. In regard to the zoning ordinance issue about requiring these to meet setback, all utility structures, utility boxes or cabinets, by definition, meet our definition of a structure and would be required to meet a setback. So the Planning Commission, we're going to be looking at over the next couple of months, and ordinance to bring forward to the city council to address that issue, potentially exempting the smaller utility cabinets. It's pretty common across the Twin Cities for exempting those. However, larger equipment, like we're looking at this evening, requiring a setback for So in looking at this specific site, again, it would be located on the east side of the building, located over 200 feet from the nearest adjacent property line that would be to the north, across Park Lawn Avenue. All setback requirements would be met. So there are two essential items, essential issues for the council to consider, and that is properly screening the unit and noise. The applicant had originally proposed to construct eight arborvitae, or eight-foot arborvitae around the perimeter of the structure, and then also have a red, six-foot red pine and a couple of Black Hill spruce to help provide screening. The Planning Commission, as part of their review of this project and as part of their recommendation for approval of this, are suggesting 10-foot-tall arborvitae's around the perimeter. The applicant has adjusted those plans and were included in the council packet this evening. They've also provided some renderings of what that would look like as planted. This is a look, the west, looking east toward York, and then looking south. The applicant has, they're agreeable to planting the 10-foot trees. However, their landscape architect has provided a letter, and I handed it out before the meeting, with some concerns about planting trees that large. The potential of them not to survive is greater, planting that large of a tree. Again, they're willing to plant the 10-foot trees, but raise that as a concern. The second issue is in regard to noise. In its current location, the unit exceeds the MPCA standards for decibel levels, due, for the most part, to its location, located just 70 feet from the nearest adjacent lot line. This new location, again, is over 200 feet away. The applicant believes that in relocating this, they would meet the noise standards. So in doing that, staff had suggested that testing be required by an acoustical engineer and submitted to the health department to ensure compliance once it's relocated. A lot of the Planning Commission discussion centered around that noise issue. And there was some discussion about if it exceeds the decibel levels over at this new location, there's a sound equipment package that would be installed. Staff has contacted the manufacturer and discovered that it would take about four weeks for that type of equipment to be delivered. So with that, in conclusion, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval of the amended site plan. The Planning Commission added the condition that the 10-foot-tall arborvitae's be planted. And they also added a condition that the existing air conditioning unit location be re-landscape per the original landscape plan. So with that, I will turn it back to the council for questions.
Questions for Director Teague, Member Sprague, and then Member Swenson?
Looking at the new location, it's adjacent to an existing chiller, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a condition of approval, could we require that that unit also be screened?
I believe you could make that requirement as well. It is a city code requirement that that should be screened. It's been there for, I believe, the applicant had indicated 30-plus years.
That unit has been there for 30, okay. Hence why it didn't have the, okay. And what, has staff had a suggestion? The proponent said that arborvitae might not be viable. Is there an alternative that staff has proposed?
No, we believe that the arborvitae is the appropriate plant material to provide year-round screening. What their landscape architect is suggesting is that planting them at a smaller size, the survival rate would be greater than planting a 10-foot-tall tree.
And what's the smaller size?
Well, she had indicated, I believe, in the memo, four feet tall. I think that would be much too small, in this case, given the size of the structure. Staff had originally suggested an eight-foot-tall be planted.
Is this the standard tree that's used for screening? I mean, arborvitae do drink a lot of water, it's kind of a high maintenance. I'm just curious.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, generally.
It's because of the density?
Combination of the arborvitae or Black Hill spruce, some type of a year-round evergreen tree.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Swenson?
As far as the noise goes when it gets moved, but it's still close to the new building, and it's still below 7500 York. So where are we measuring that noise? I mean, I'm, if it, if it takes, because there's a building in between, if it takes care of our neighbors to the west, what happens to the existing neighbors with the noise if it currently now goes over MPCA standards?
The measurement for the MPCA standard is adjacent property lines. So the adjacent property would be 200 feet to the north across Park Lawn.
Right.
So you wouldn't recognize the existing building to the south there.
Right. Or the new building to the west?
Correct.
Okay. I'll save my other questions for the developer.
Other questions for Director Teague?
Yes. I have a question. Member Bennett? Questions, Your Honor? Director Teague, I have copies of the plans that were originally approved, and I believe these were not shown at the Planning Commission, but I would like to have them. That's the landscaping plan, I believe. And then one other. So we may want to turn that so that our orientation, where, on the left, the parking area that we see, that's where the air conditioning unit is now. So actually, what was approved was some fairly extensive landscaping, correct?
Correct.
Black Hill spruce, I believe, are the jagged-looking lines, and then a honey locust. And then to the south, it was honey locust and oak. So those are the landscaping plans that were approved and...
That's right.
...approval was conditioned on that. Okay. And then the color rendering is less exact, but it does give some idea of what it was that was in front of the Planning Commission and in front of the council when they approved this, as well as was shown to the neighbors during the public hearing regarding it.
That is correct, yeah.
Great. Thank you. I do have questions, and they can be answered by you or the proponent, and that is a follow-up to Member Swenson's questions. Understanding that the state noise limit is measured at adjacent property lines, how close to this unit will be the residents at York Gardens at the closest point? And then also, how close will residents be in the nearest residence at 7500 York?
That, I don't know off the top of my head. I can either measure the plan, or maybe the proponent has an answer.
And I can save that question for the proponents. I believe that question was asked and answered during the Planning Commission hearing, but just would like to have that restated for the record. And one last question, and that is, understanding that the discussion on screening has at this point focused on plantings, there was some mention during the Planning Commission hearing about earth birmingham, which appears to exist to the south between 7500 York and the existing unit. Is that correct? There's some earth birmingham that appears to be depicted in the photographs?
I believe that's true.
I have that. It's the view looking south toward 7500 York. There's one view of the current unit, and then a view, computer-generated view of what it will look like with the, so that appears to be some low earth birmingham with mature evergreens? Yes.
My people that are proponent, too.
Yes. It's hard to see with the light conditions, but looking at the before photograph, it does appear that there's some elevation. And understanding that that's probably the most effective for sound absorption. So I have the question of whether or not that can be required to be installed?
That would be a question for the applicant. I believe there's some underground utilities that may provide some challenges.
I believe it was stormwater tanks, was what I heard during the Planning Commission discussion. And then the second question is, what do, what would our code require or limit in terms of fencing? Understanding that fencing would probably not be as effective and might simply concentrate and reflect or deflect noise, but in short term, would fencing be an option while vegetation was growing?
Fencing is an option for screening. The code talks about a combination of either... The code talks about a combination of either fencing or landscaping to provide screening for utility such as this.
And is there a height maximum for a fence?
Well, anything over, I believe it's eight feet, it turns into a structure, and essentially you're building a wall.
And this unit is approximately 12 feet high?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If your question earlier was the distance from York Gardens, it looks like on the planning commission notes, it's about 100 feet, and then 175 feet from 7,500 York.
So in fact, the closest residents are not.
It's the new building.
200 feet away, the closest residents, understating what the state code regulates and where the noise violation gets registered, but in fact, there will be people living within 100 feet of this unit. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Member Brendel?
I just, I just have one. My train of thought, when I looked at this and first heard about it, is how did we get this far down the road without realizing that this unit needed to go somewhere? And then what is, you know, what is the best plan of action for us going forward, handling this situation, but going forward? Does our code require? It mentions in here that we didn't have complete engineering plans. Did we ever have a complete engineering plan?
The building permits, well, the plans that were reviewed by planning commission, council, did not show this unit. This is an auxiliary unit to the main cooling system, and it wasn't shown on the building plans either. So when staff, when I reviewed the plans, they didn't show up. It came to staff's attention through complaints, at least through, to my attention.
And so I guess, I guess when we hear from the proponent, I'd like to know if it was planned that this unit was going to be part of the installation, then the right thing to do, if it had been omitted from the plan, would have been to come to the city and say, we made a mistake in going into this. And so that's what I'd like to hear, is how we can correct this, and how we, as a city, can go forward and forewarn, I guess, into the next project.
Yeah, certainly. The applicant can address that further, but I think the right thing to do in this situation is to relocate the structure.
Right. Oh, and without question, without question. I'm just, I'm just looking back at the next, back at our experience here and anticipating the next, and saying, all right, it would be really nice to avoid this in the future, so let's make sure that we look at this carefully and analyze it and put a plan in place so that we can fix it next time.
Yeah, I don't believe that it was planned at that time. I make it a point with all applicants that the plans that you're submitting and are bringing forward to the city council, these are the plans that you.
That you're going to build.
That you're going to build, and any changes to those plans need to come back.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
All right, one other question.
I thought two of our planning commissioners, Carpenter and Staunton, raised an interesting issue, and that is, if the screening and the new location did not bring the noise level into compliance, what other options are available?
If the screening and the noise reduction kit?
No, if the screening and the new location.
Oh.
Do not bring the unit into compliance, then what?
Yeah, then the option would be to install this noise reduction kit to bring the noise levels down. Keep in mind that the noise reduction kit, from what I'm told, is it raises about 30 inches to the existing unit in height.
And is that what you checked on to see about delivery time? Four weeks?
Correct.
We had another piece of equipment.
That's correct, right.
That was the noise abatement equipment?
Right, right.
And when did you check on it?
Right, yes. We contacted the manufacturer, and they had indicated that it's a four-week delivery time.
Okay, and that was a week ago?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have. That prompt anything else for Director Teague?
I just want to follow up on Member Bennett's point to understand clearly. So right now, the unit is how close to the nearest residence?
It's 70 feet from the nearest adjacent lot line. It's 17 feet back from the property line at York Gardens.
Because she raises an interesting point, it's going to be 100 feet from.
York Gardens.
Yeah, and so how will those people be protected?
It's considerably further than the existing unit, but it's.
Not that much.
Well, the existing unit is, I don't know, if it's 30-some feet to the, to the building, as it's located today.
Oh, 30, 30-some feet, okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Would the proponent like to come forward, please, and make their presentation, and I'd like to have you try to confine it to about 10 minutes.
Can we get you a set? Okay, I, I just wanted to.
I'm going to give you a handheld microphone, so you can use that, and then please give us your name and address, too.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. My name is Kyle Clowitter, I'm with Walker &amp; Associates. Our address is 5421 Fel-Tel Road, Minnetonka, Minnesota, 55343. I come before you tonight on behalf of York Gardens. I want to start out by just stating that this was not an intentional or willful act on the part of the project team. We first became aware of this situation when complaints started arising from the neighborhood. That's how we first became aware of it as a project team. And very shortly after, in discussion with Kerry Teague, realized, you know, how the city code was being interpreted, and how this unit was being interpreted in relation to that code, and started working on solutions in conjunction with the city. And the city staff has been very helpful in that process. Originally, we went down the path, as Kerry said, of variance. We quickly realized that that wasn't going to be, or wasn't likely going to be a good solution for everyone involved, and so we looked at, how can we best change the situation for the neighbors, for ourselves, for the residents in all the buildings in the neighborhood? And we came up with what we believe to be the best viable solution for everyone involved. We are literally moving it as far away as we possibly can from everyone. Now, of course, we're in the middle of a developed area, so we have limits. There is a property line that we do have to respect. The property that the project is on is a leased property from 7,500 York under an 80-year land lease, so we do have to respect those property lines. And so we came up with a solution that we feel works for our building, the residents at York Gardens. It actually is getting it farther away from our building in addition to the other, any other neighboring property. In respect to the landscaping plan, we have no problem putting in 10-foot arborvitae. What came to our attention is when the 10-foot arborvitae came up at the planning commission, our consultant, our landscape architect, raised a red flag and said, hey, wait a minute, I don't think you should do that. And basically, as it was described to me in layman's terms, and I'm not a, I'm not a landscape architect, but basically, how it was described to myself was that by planting a potted plant, which of course come in a smaller stature in order to grow in a pot, they actually will grow faster and fill out fuller quicker than a plant that has to be spaded, which would mean that the plant is actually in the ground, a 10-foot plant would currently be growing in a ground somewhere, a spade would have to come in and rip it out, and then replant it. And so it has to remake that root ball connections, I guess, is the best way to describe it. So I know it's a little counterintuitive, but we were, it was brought to our attention that it was, would behoove all of us to do a plant that's been growing in a pot. Other than that, if we go with 10-foot, we're fine with doing 10-foot arborvitae, you know, that's not a problem, so, but I just, we wanted to bring that to your attention. A lot has been made about the sound attenuation package. We looked into the sound attenuation package, and basically, what we decided, realized is that by doing the sound attenuation package in its current location, it doesn't solve the problem. It may reduce the sound, but it doesn't take care of the site issues, it doesn't take care of the need for a variance. It actually increases the size of the unit, and my understanding is we would require a building permit, which wouldn't be likely approved without a variance, because we're worsening an existing situation to some extent. So we thought, okay, best solution for us is move it, move it as quickly as we possibly can, get it out of everybody's hair, and that, we know that's going to reduce the sound for everyone, we know that that's going to remove it as an eyesore for the most part, get the landscaping in place, measure the, measure the sound. If we're still over, we put the sound attenuation on without a problem. One of the items that were brought up at the, at the planning commission was, why don't you do the sound attenuation now? And I think there's two components with that. We're not entirely certain how we can proceed with that without making another faux pas, or even if we could obtain a building permit for that component. And we actually have done some investigation with our general contractor and produced a schedule, which really shows us that we can actually move the unit as quick or quicker than we can attach that sound attenuation package on, which once again, we think is the best solution for everyone. It takes care of the problem and gets it out of the way.
If this council approves this, Mr. Clowitter, how quickly can you get it moved?
We're looking at having it completely moved within the week of the 5th of September. Now, there is some concern, obviously, with temperatures, and, you know, if we're in a heat wave situation such as we are today, obviously, we can't take that unit down during that timeframe. But, you know, at the last meeting, we were asking for early fall. Since then, we've gone back and worked with our contractor to determine exactly under what conditions we can move it, and we're looking at, you know, that early September timeframe.
What about the, what, strike that. When does your geothermal system come online?
The geothermal system did come online last week. Unfortunately, with the current heat wave, the geothermal system's working at maximum, and the unit has to continue to work, too. This is, you know, outside of what would be typically designed specifications.
So you're not seeing any abatement on the frequency of use of the chiller during the, during the heat wave?
No, not during this.
Even though the geothermal's online?
Correct, correct.
Other questions for Mr. Clowitter? Member Swenson?
From your new building inside, on the chiller side of the building, what do you hear when it's on?
Well, with where it's currently located, it's on kind of the service side of the building, so there isn't, you know, obviously, there's background noise. I mean, it's not, if you're listening for it, it's not that you wouldn't hear it, but it's not in an area that's, that's really intrusive to the residents. The kitchen is over there, the kitchen tends to have its own noises, the dining area, you know, those kind of functions.
You've got some outdoor patio, you've got an outdoor dining area, right above it?
Yep, yep, we do. You know, to be honest, the mayor was at our open house, I sat on the outdoor patio myself, the unit was running at the time. Can you hear it? Yes, you know, to be honest, it wasn't something that, you know, that I particularly picked up on at the time.
Sorry, Member Swenson, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. I just, one other question. How long does it take to put that noise abatement piece of equipment on?
With the lead time after.
No, I don't want to know the order time, just what, how long does it physically take to put it on?
I have that right here on the schedule. Looks like about four weeks?
Four weeks to install it? No, it's four weeks to get it.
No, four weeks to get it, and then they have to remove the existing equipment. No, I take that back, it's not four weeks, that includes the, it looks like about a week and a half that they're showing on the schedule.
Okay.
Mr. Clowitter, I interrupted you. Were you, were you done with your presentation?
Well, I did want to point out one thing on, or two things, if I may, if I may just do two quick items. One, this is the current site plan that were, is in the documents that have been submitted to the city. So this is the amended site plan showing the new location of the chiller. And I do want to point out the property line. I know Councilmember Bennett had talked about potentially doing some birmingham. There are some underground utilities, the stormwater storage, or the stormwater storage tanks, which would be very problematic in order to make that excavation and make that happen. In addition, we would be dealing with, you know, an easement situation on what's technically someone else's property. I think the councilmember Sprague had indicated screening the existing unit that's there. That unit serves 7,500 York, which is on their property, once again. So I guess I just want to point out that our unit will, in essence, be screening their unit from one direction, but if we start trying to address their unit from, on their property, we get into a situation where we need to involve that property owner, obviously, and they're not here tonight represented to speak to that. The other point I would like to make is, while this was not on what was submitted to the city council, the process that a project goes through before it's financed and gets into the ground, there are quite a bit of expense on the front end of design that does not occur until after a city council typically would approve a project. The construction documents aren't completed when the, when the project's site plan, landscaping plan, and those kind of things come before a city council, primarily because of the cost involved in that, and the need to get financing, and the need to have city council approval in order to get financing. This system, the mechanical systems weren't even designed yet at this point. We did go with this particular system somewhat in response to what we heard in the city council and the planning commission. We went with a geothermal system. It did not have enough of a payback to justify it in its own right, but we felt that it was a justifiable expense to us in that we were really kind of stepping forward in a new technology that was a very responsible technology. And so I just wanted to point that out, that that's kind of how that process unfurled. And the unit in question, where we may have perhaps gone wrong, is that while we didn't have identified at that time, and so of course, it wasn't on the site plan, it was on the electrical drawings and the mechanical drawings that were submitted to various agencies for review. So, you know, we, we thought, I mean, I'm not saying anyone has made a mistake, but I, you know, I think we did not intentionally try and omit something from a plan, you know, and try to, you know, sneak it in under the radar, as it were, so.
Member Sprague?
Member Bennett pointed out some original landscaping that was approved on the plan where the chiller is now. Is the intent with us to go forward to install the originally approved landscaping?
Correct.
Okay.
Member Brendel?
Well, you're in a tough spot, which puts us in a tough spot a little bit, so we'll just get through this. I think, as I'm looking at this, when, understanding that some of the, some of the structural design comes from the things that go and get in place after the approval happens, I do understand that. However, what I'm stuck on here is there's a structure that's built. I mean, this thing is, it is a structure. Now, in that, is it not, isn't it, wouldn't it be considered a structure on this property, and therefore, need to fit into the plan?
Correct. By definition, in our code, this is a structure.
Okay.
And it was not shown on the building permit plan that was reviewed by planning staff or the building department. I believe that there was an electrical permit.
Okay.
Where it was shown.
All right, all right, well, it, I don't know, it just, it, it's just, it's something that I think offline, we're going to have to look at and make sure we catch, catch these things so that we. catch these things so that we fix it next time. Where does this new location, how does that compare with where the underground garage is?
It's, um, can you see the, can I have it?
No, now we can, now we can.
Okay. Underground garage is basically in this area right here. And this structure is over to this side, so it's, you can see, you know, maybe 30 feet off of the garage.
Now, in the underground garage I'm speaking of, is this the one for 7500 York?
Correct.
Okay, okay, excellent, okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, thanks, Mr. Chloeter. We'll open it up to a public hearing now, and then we'll be back to you.
Thank you.
I think we're finished for now. Thank you. All right, I'm going to open this matter as a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and inquire or comment regarding this proposed amendment to the site plan?
My name is Jody Burnick, and I'm at 7420 Edinburgh Way, number 6217. I'm sorry if I'm a little nervous, I don't speak in public talk.
Joy, would you give me your last name one more time?
Burnick, B-R-N-I-G. I'd like to thank the council for listening to our concerns, and especially Councilwoman Sprague for coming over personally and interviewing us and coming and seeing our, our problem physically, which doesn't too happen too often. And I had to ask some concerns that, I'm glad that it's being moved right now, and it will be moved, but, but it is causing us still a lot of problems with sleep and, and our well-being, my well-being, because I live right across the street from us. And I do have the concern about how the city inspectors allowed this to happen when it was being built and when it came online. The day of the, even the day of the open house, I was calling over there to say, you need to turn this off. We cannot even go out on a balcony, it was loud. And so, I do have this concern that it could happen again if we have buildings being built and cities inspectors aren't being, following code, and also, they're not following state law as far as the noise is concerned. And Ebenezer is taking responsibility for that. And I'd like to see next time, oh, another concern I have is that 7500 allows this, allowed this to be built, and they wanted it to be built because they were concerned about not being able to get home from rehabilitation. And I think that they should be lenient enough to have this moved onto their property as abatement, or whatever you want to call it, and because this was their approval, they had to approve this project. And so, I do think that they should be allowed, Ebenezer should be allowed, or whoever gets this done, to use their property as much as possible to get it away from us. And I would like to see if the council or the city, next time you use, technology is really, really advanced nowadays, and you can use three dimensionally, you can use computers to look at projects, to look at trees is one thing, but to look at a whole, how the building is built, is being built can affect our community, and to look at technology that way, and thank you.
Thank you, Joy, thanks. Anyone else? If, no one, thank you. Moved in second to be closed a public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Member Swenson?
I guess my concern with this, and thank you for moving it, I appreciate that, is that we will now have gone through a whole summer with it in the place where it's causing angst to our residents who've been here for a long time. And even if you're able to move it by September 5th, that is six weeks away, you're still moving it within your shot now of the front side of your building, where a lot of your residents are. I guess I'm more inclined to have you order tomorrow a $35,000 noise abatement system and put it on immediately. I kind of wish this had all come to fruition in June when we started discussing it and when Member Sprague first brought it forward. I know you had to grind out a little bit about it and try to figure out how to move it, and I understand that, and you had to really hear from us that you needed to move it because we weren't going to give you permission to leave it where it was. But now, we're really into the worst heat we've ever had. I'm sure it's running full time, and their life is not pleasant where they live right now. If I can improve it for at least a couple of weeks and then make sure that when you move it, it's not as loud as it is now for the other side of your building, it seems to me that would be the final step. I know it costs you more money, and I appreciate the money you, you're going to be spending on it, but that would be my inclination.
All right, how about with respect to the issue on the, on the landscaping? Do you have a thought there about some shorter trees, maybe in the six to eight foot range instead of the 10 foot range?
I think an eight foot, what the city originally proposed for eight foot is fine.
Okay, Member Sprague?
And then Member Bennett? I'm just wondering if, what about if the, the kit was ordered to be on site so that if noise were?
No, I want it on so that the last two weeks of the summer, and then if we have the September heat wave that we had, what, was it two years ago we had it in September? Do I remember?
So, we obviate the rest?
Because I know they can't move it when it impacts the health of the residents inside, and I get that. I know that's why we can't ask them tomorrow to shut it off and start moving it, because that's not going to work for the residents inside, our health department wouldn't allow it. I get that. But I, you know, September 5th sounds like a great date, but if it comes and goes and it becomes September 20th, now, it's another three weeks and...
I, I guess following up on that, then, I also am concerned about the, moving this problem into the backyard of the next people. And that would solve that problem off the bat. With regards to landscaping, I've got to think, we, we know what best practices are, and if a 10-foot arborvitae is spec, it, it works out. I mean, this isn't a new type of, new species of plants, so I would, I would support staff's recommendation in that regard as well.
Okay, thank you. Member Bennett?
As someone who had a landscaper who knew more about form than he knew about plants, and we've lost two of the four lilac bushes that he planted too close together to have them look filled in, I do see the, the problem with the planting. However, I do absolutely support the installation of noise abatement ASAP. Had it been ordered when this problem first came to light, we would have, everyone in this room would have had a more pleasant summer. And so, I thoroughly, I support that, and also for the reason of the comfort and the well-being of residents, both at 7500 York and at York Gardens. Not every resident at 7500 York supported this, and the majority did, that's how the project got approved and got to be built. But I'm very mindful of the testimony that we took and the correspondence that we had from people at 7500 York who were very concerned about what they were going to be experiencing with their view from the building, and so, anything that can be done to make life more pleasant and less changed for them, I support. In that vein, I do, I haven't heard that earth birmingham is impossible. And the, it appears that the unit has stood behind 7500 York for 30 years, unbuffered, without the, the screening that was required by our code, pretty much because nobody complained, and nobody complained because it was surrounded with some earth birmingham from 7500 York, and mature pines that have grown in place, and then there were, there was other vegetation that screened it from the housing that got built later across Edinburgh Way and also to the north. So, we're now going to have two very large units. I've been by and seen this, I did not go into other buildings, as did Member Sprague, but I was by on a cool day with windows down and could hear the, the, the equipment, and also went out this weekend, and, and it's good to hear that the geothermal is up and running, but it is amazingly loud. So, again, the noise abatement, I would like to look at more for the screening. I do share the concerns about putting in fully developed trees and then having them compete with each other for life. I understand about the risks of digging out a complete tree, what you get for root structure. So, I'd rather have that vegetation grow in place, at the same time, looking at the pictures, even the best case pictures with the arborvitae grown, it's not much of screening for, again, two big units, very, very mechanical. And that, I guess, is my last comment. I know this comment was made in the Planning Commission. What did you think when you opened the box? I look at these landscaping plans, and I see trees, and I just don't see how somebody puts a very, something that looks like a moon landing module in place of trees. I just don't see how that's accidental or a mistake. I understand that that's the explanation, and I think it's, it's time to fix it.
Member Brendel?
I have a couple of things, just to wrap up. I'm, I'm just embarrassed that this wasn't caught, but I expect we'll fix a process and, and get it fixed. Two more things. One is, in the Planning Commission notes, I noted that the thermostats are locked at 71 degrees in this building. I don't keep my house at 71 degrees with air conditioning. Probably, I would imagine, I would venture to guess, that the reason this unit works so hard is because it has to cool to 71. How about cooling to 76 or 78? And I'll just put that out there, I don't understand why it has to be 71, I don't need an answer to that question, but just putting out the, my own personal observation that 71 seems like it might be working harder than it needs to. And I guess, looking at page A13 of the materials that we received, the bottom illustration shows two units that are painted green, and the top shows a unit that is silver and has BAC on it. Maybe that unit could, in the interim, be painted green, and so, it wouldn't be quite so intrusive. And so, I, I, I don't know what the options are with that, but just trying to, trying to get us to a point where, where we can, we can live with it. And I'll close with thanking the residents who wrote us about this and told us about this, giving us a chance to intercede and fix it. Thank you.
Let me ask the council, other council members, how they, their thoughts on the birmingham versus, let's say, just using arborvitae material or some other material at a height determined by our city forester, but no less, let's say, no less than six feet tall.
Well, birmingham...
I guess that's a two-part question, the birmingham is the first part, and then...
I'm still unclear why we, we can't get a, a staff recommendation that specs the right kind of tree to screen with at this point. I mean, is that the forester didn't have a chance to look at it? I mean, what, I'm relying on the information that I get from the staff about these type of things, so I'm just curious.
No, staff believes that the, the arborvitae and the, the pine tree that's out front, that, that is the appropriate type of landscaping to screen this now?
Staff meaning our forester?
Correct.
Okay.
And then what about the birmingham? Any thoughts on the birmingham?
I, you know, I'd love to screen both units, but we have a ownership issue. I, I guess I don't, I don't feel strongly about that. If, for this location, looking at the unit across from it that has no screening on that side, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty, it's a sore thumb sticking out, so what, what view are you, are you thinking of? Help me...
Well, I understand that there has, I understand that there has to be an opening for air intake, and so, that's why I was, in my mind's eye, I was seeing sort of a larger area screened with birmingham and vegetation.
Which side are you thinking?
Well, to the south.
To the west, towards the building?
To the west, toward the building is very difficult. It's not very far, and I don't know if you build a fence on that side.
It's a hundred feet, it's a hundred feet.
The birmingham's on the, is it the south, the south side? I'm trying to...
The south side is where Curly is, so I'm thinking of the north, I'm reversed. What's been given as the nearest property is the property to the north.
So, you want the berm towards the parking lot?
What I would love to see is birmingham that's similar to, where I think that birmingham is going, looking at the designs that we've seen up on the screen, the site maps, is that it's, there's a pathway, I believe, that leads off, or a driveway that leads off, actually, it's a driveway entrance.
I see where, yep, yep.
So, below that earth birmingham, there's driveway entrance. I, I see sort of a continuation. The most impact that that unit is going to have is, of course, to the west, to the residents of York Gardens, also potentially to the north. I do know that earth is a very good sound absorber, and it's less reliant on, you don't have the vagaries that you have with the health of vegetation where something might, might die, and then you're replacing it and waiting for it to grow up into place.
So, you want to berm it towards, towards which building? Because if it's, if it's sound insulation...
Toward the north, toward the, toward the, the west, I don't know what room exists for it, and that, of course, is where it has the impact, that's going to be the closest is York Gardens.
Right, I mean, that's where you'd want the berm if you could put it there.
Yes.
Manager Neil?
Just to clarify, is the council discussing increasing the, the berm that is being, that's on the plans? Is that what the discussion is?
The new berm on the, new unit?
There are no, there are no berms around the new unit.
Yeah. Birmingham the new unit. And I don't know if, I mean, I'm looking at the existing berm, that's a, you know, versus a landscape berm where you might see in someone's front yard, I don't know the height we're, we're talking about here.
And I would, that's what we were discussing, and we haven't, we haven't evaluated the, the feasibility or advisability of a, of a berm within vegetation on top of it. You know, there, the berm takes up certainly more space than a, laterally and depth, and we have not...
Mayor, is Mr. Weissfending in the audience with you or part of your team?
Yes.
Why don't you, why don't you tell us as the landscape architect?
Oh, the letter was to him, okay, excuse me, I was, I was looking for, yeah, Candace, I don't see Candace, go ahead.
We have two different landscapes. Director Keith, on your approval with the subject conditions, you have on number five, the applicant is required to plant a 10-foot arborvitae to screen the unit, but on page two of your Planning Commission staff report, you say the applicant is proposing to screen the air conditioner with landscaping a robe eight-foot, arborvitae is proposed with a six-foot red pine and two eight-foot black hill spruce. So, are we doing less trees, or you only mentioned the arborvitae?
Staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission was for eight foot tall. The Planning Commission added the condition that it be...
Yeah, no, I understood the change in the arborvitae, but there's also...
Other species.
Other species, the six-foot red pine and the eight-foot black hill spruce.
Those would stay the same.
Okay, but that, they didn't, they weren't a condition, the only reason you put the arborvitae in as a condition is because the size changed?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I seen the rendering, it looks like a spruce there along the arborvitae.
No, I just wanted to make sure that those trees were still there because it wasn't a condition.
Mayor, to answer your question, I, I, I don't see the need for the berm here. I think the landscaping will be sufficient, and given it's adjacent to a parking lot, I, I just don't see the, the need.
Member Swenson?
I was going to make a motion, so...
All right, let's do that, and then we'll talk about the tangential issue.
I would be, I would move for resolution number 2011-72 with the conditions, and number five to change so that the applicant has to do what is in the original page two, the eight-foot arborvitae with the six-foot red pine and the eight-foot black hill spruce. And the seventh condition, be added that the noise abatement equipment will be ordered immediately for the new unit on the west and installed immediately upon receiving it, and that it be used, then, continued to be used on the piece of equipment as it's moved, and that the installation would happen no later than August 31st, 2011. I'm hoping for earlier, because if I look at the timeline, it should be earlier, but I'd like to put a drop dead date. I'd like to put a drop-dead date.
If the sound attenuation onto the unit would be September nineteenth. If we're, if it's approved tonight and we submit for permit, order the equipment-
I've just given you a permit to put it on, so what's the issue?
We need a building permit.
Carrie, what's the issue?
Building permit, we could turn that around in a day or two.
And then we've got to order, order the equipment, hasn't been ordered-
I know it hasn't been ordered. It's a four-week turnaround.
Right.
And you need a week and a half to install it when you get there.
I've given you a week and a half to install it.
And then you're going to move it with the, with the unit attached to it? The air abatement unit attached to it?
I want it to stay on the unit once you've moved it. I don't care if you move it with or with it on, but once you've moved it, I want it to stay on the unit.
Okay, understood. I guess, if, if, if we can, if we can move the unit with or without it on, then I understood, I mean, I understood.
I want it installed on the minute you get it. So I want you to have a plan in place so that when it arrives, it will get installed, so that if you end up not being able to move that unit until the fifteenth of September because of a heat wave-
Right.
Or the twentieth, and that's not to give you more time to move it, that's to give the neighbors the-
The unit does have to come down to, for it to be installed as well, so we would still be under the same heat restrictions. I, I, I can't see not having air conditioning in a building filled with senior citizens.
So you're going to put something on it and you have to take the unit down? You're just saying you have to turn it off?
It, it's not just on it, there's new fans that go in it. I mean, it's a whole kind of rework of the mechanics of the unit. It, it's not just something that bolts on to it.
Okay. Carrie, do you have a recommendation?
I think the, the recommendation that you've put forward seems reasonable. It's, it's getting that equipment installed, unless there's an issue with moving the unit with the noise-abatement equipment installed, but I'm not sure I'm hearing that concern.
We can expedite the, the building permit aspect of this.
Okay, I guess-
Could be subject to ex-
And I guess, based on what you say that needs to be done to have it installed, that you, I would give you the flexibility to work with our planning department if there's an issue on being able to install it in the timely manner that I expect you to be able to.
Fair enough.
Is that fair to you, Director Teague?
That's fair.
Okay.
Second.
I have, I have a condition I would like to add, if it is agreeable, and that is that the site preparation for the new installation commence as soon as possible, so that there are no weather-related delays, and once the unit, once the weather cooperates enough to move the unit, the site to move it too is ready, so that we do, I, because I can recall some heat waves in September and snow by October twelfth. And what I'm really, what I'm concerned about, among other things, is that we get caught in some kind of weather pattern where it's too hot to move it, and then it becomes too cold to move it, and to avoid that, would like the site preparation to be, again, conducted as soon as possible.
Director Teague, does that seem like a reasonable condition?
If I understood that right, it's to prepare the, the new site and get it ready for-
Yes, yes, I understand that there's a pad that needs to be poured, I understand that there is some wiring and work that's going, in fact, I guess, the, I heard at the Planning Commission hearing testimony that the Board of Seventy-five Hundred York had voted to allow some equipment or wires or lines to go through their garage area for this, so I would like all of that to be in place, so that when the weather cooperates and the unit can be moved, it can be moved instantly.
Expediately.
We're not, we're not delayed, because there's some site preparation still to be completed.
Would you agree to accept that as an aide's consent?
I would agree to accept that, I'm just looking for a response.
That, that was our plan.
Okay.
Immediately after getting it approved.
Thank you for standing up and letting us know that that works, that, because then I don't need, we don't need to put anything extra on it, so thank you.
That's fine. My only concern-
Would you agree to that, is my second?
Yeah, second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you all. All right, we're in the community comment section of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council? Mr. Carlson?
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to finish my, I'm Wayne Carlson, five-twenty-three Laurel, five-twenty-three Covington, Edina. I wanted to finish my comments on the resolution twenty-eleven dash forty. I got to the point where I'd gone through all the findings, and basically they're based on ignorance, superstition, prejudice, or the lack of discernment, and the carelessness in the operation of these findings. We've got a date of the meeting being on December fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We've got no signatures, we've got the wrong names of petitioners, so it just shows the, the carelessness, and I hope this doesn't continue in the other work of the council. In here, you cite that this is going to be a nuisance, the ordinance says, it's very specific about an ordinance, a nuisance, and this is not what a nuisance is. What I'd like to tell you about is a nuisance that I had when I was twenty-one years old. I was twenty-one years old in, in Vietnam, and I had two friends over. The first one went over there, his father was a general in the army, he was wanting to be an admiral. His, his father was an admiral in the Navy, he wanted to be a general in the Marine Corps. He went over to Vietnam, within six months, we reported in, in the Newsweek, that he'd been, he'd, he and his first sergeant had been abandoned by the Vietnamese, the Vietcong had got him, they took and cut his testicles off, put them in his mouth, and then shot him in the back of his head. That was my best friend. My second-best friend went over and lived for about six months before he'd blown up in mines. The body wasn't even, couldn't even be, basically couldn't be found. So that's what a nuisance is for me. And when I asked to have dogs, it's not about putting a, putting a golf club in my bed at night. This is something that helps me with PTSD. This was not something that I was making up. I had a recommendation from the VA for this, and I think it's really a bad precedent you're saying for how you support veterans of this city. We can't even come back to this country, and I can't get a ten, ten-pound dog to help me with my mental and physical efforts. I really wish you'd get straight when you do these, these findings. This is really nonsense. Let's just say there's people in the community that, that oppose it, and that we can't go against that opposition. And we really don't support our veterans in this community, and we don't give a crap about HUD and what's, what needs to be done for reasonable accommodations and housing. Really what I'm asking for, I didn't just come up here to bitch about this. What I would like to do is a reasonable accommodation, that you approve me getting a fourth dog now with the, with a proposal, if my dogs don't die in another three years, I can get another one. I just, I was trying to get through this so I didn't have to come back several times, but I think this is a reasonable accommodation to, to have for this proposal, and if the findings you could have that take care of your veterans would give me a reasonable accommodation in housing, and I would ask you to do that for those very reasons. I'd like to reconsider this.
Mr. Carlson, I know we've been through this one time with you, and we do have an ordinance that has this pet limitation, and frankly, it wouldn't make any difference if you were on an acre and not in a more dense housing situation like you're in over at Coventry, but I would suggest to you that, based on what I've heard you say, if, if you're being treated at the VA and you have a, you have a diagnosed post-
I had a prescription I brought to the council.
Let me finish, if you can get a, if you can get somebody to give us a diagnosis of post-traumatic stress disorder, you know, the council may look at this in a different way on a, on a purely medical basis, but it wasn't only that factor that led us to make a determination last time with regard to the number of pets that you can have in Coventry.
And I complied with that. We had, we had, we had, we had two cats, we got rid of them. I mean, I, I complied with that. This is a totally different circumstance, Your Honor.
All right, you, you go back and you put together a medical case, and we'll look at it again. I can't promise you anything, but we'll look at it again.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll move to the reports and recommendations section of the agenda. Resolution two thousand and eleven dash seventy-three, accepting various donations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's moved and seconded, we adopt the resolution stated. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Resolution twenty-eleven dash seventy-three is approved, and awards this, or donations in this reporting period were to the Edina Art Center and to the Edina Park Department. Some nice, nice awards from folks and, awards, donations from people, and we'll have their names on the website, so.
The golf course.
Pardon me?
There are golf course donations as well.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, thanks. All right, next we've got some student appointments to advisory boards and commissions to take care of, and we've gotten terrific assistance again this year from members Bennett and Brindle, who took the time to interview all of these terrific students that we have applying, and I'm sure it was a tough task to decide who to recommend to the council, but we'll take your recommendations, however you want to handle it.
You know, it, this is one of the most fun things to do. It truly is. As, as we interview adults for our positions on the various boards and commissions and learn who lives in our community and their various talents, it's humbling to look at the kids who show up and want to donate their volunteer time as students to gain experience and learn about how the city runs, and more importantly, allow us to learn from them. And there is, there's just a wealth of, of, of contributions that they can make, but, but too, they just, I, I, I look back at when I was seventeen and eighteen years old, I was nothing like this. So I, I have great respect for what the, what these students are doing, what their goals are, their lofty goals in their lives, and thank them for including service to Edina in those goals.
All right, good. Member Bennett, your comments, and then I'm going to ask, I think, one of you to take the first slate on the left side, left column, and then the other member take the second slate on the right-hand side.
Thank you. As with last year, we tried as much as possible to match students with their expressed interests. Often those were interests that were expressed in the written applications themselves, but since I think about eight students listed Human Rights and Relations Commission as their first choice, and a corresponding number listed Park Board as their first choice, sometimes that expressed interest was something that actually came out during the interview. City Clerk Didmaigan did pre-interviews, the students in the hall, and that was also really helpful. I think they came to us relaxed and very personable. The students who, whom we were not able to appoint this year are not going to be seniors. We strongly encourage them to apply again. One actually had a, an evening meeting, she's on a curriculum task force in the, at the high school, that is meeting on the same evening as the two commissions in which she expressed an interest. So came up with the best list we could, we feel it's a very strong list. Again, we are asking the Edina Housing Foundation if it would like students to serve, and it has expressed an interest, that they modify, that they change at least some of their meeting times so that students can attend those meetings, which currently are held in the morning on school days, and, and span that start of the school day.
Good thought. All right, you want to nominate the, the-
Yes, to the, to the Edina Art Center Board, we are nominating Justin Moran and Tara Motady. To the Edina Housing Foundation, we are nominating Yasmin Almag and Jamie Mayer. To the Energy and Environment Commission, we are nominating Tara Gupta and Bevlin Jennings. To the Edina Community Health Committee, we are nominating Maggie Stang and Tyler Gieske. And to the Heritage Preservation Board, we are nominating Anna Ellingbo and Samuel Kotman.
All right, you're moving that slate?
Yes, I'm moving that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the named appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Member Brindle?
All right. We are nominating to the Human Rights and Relations Commission, Gabe Aderhold and Mackenzie Nolan. To the Edina Park Board, we are nominating James Neville and Patricia White, W E I C H T. To the Edina Planning Commission, we are nominating Emily Turkaski and Matthew Rock. And to the Edina Transportation Commission, we are nominating Steven Schweiger and Haley Haush.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the named appointees, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right, segueing to the qualified adults of our very qualified children, we had some other interviews that we conducted as a council, and potential appointments to the Art Center Board and the Heritage Preservation Board, and on behalf of the council, I would move the appointment of Kitty O'Day to a term ending February one, two thousand and thirteen, to the Art Center Board, and Mr. Robert Moore to a term ending February one, two thousand and twelve, to the Heritage Preservation Board. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Very good.
Kitty O'Day is here, so congratulations.
Yeah, Kitty, thanks for coming over this evening. All right, we are at mayor and council comments, and Member Brindle?
Ah, thank you. I have one that I will introduce, I'm sure it's a discussion that I'll take offline, but I received a call about a property line dispute in the Country Club area, and it is a situation, and we may all be familiar with similar situations, where a resident decides they would like to put up a fence, and so they have the fence put up, and without realizing it, the fence is in the property, within the property of their next-door neighbor, within a foot, but it is in, clearly, on the other side of their property line. This happened, I'll say, about twenty-five years ago, that's the estimate that I've been given, that the house, the property owner who built the fence sold the house to a new property owner about twenty years ago. So the, so we have neighbor one, let's say, for example, you have neighbor one, and that's the neighbor whose property has the fence. Neighbor two is the property where, where the, that's the neighbor that built the fence. So now there's a new neighbor in neighbor two's house. Neighbor two has lived in this house now twenty years, and considers this fence to belong to them. Neighbor one sees this fence clearly in their property, and it's falling down now after twenty years. So what we've got is a situation where neighbor one wants either a new fence or the fence taken down, and neighbor two says, gee, you know, it's been my fence for all this long, I'll just move my property line to where that fence is. So we have a property line dispute, and so my questions, I think, really are directed more so toward the city attorney, as to, number one, can the location of a fence relocate a property line? And if, if it can, then how can neighbor one, if you will, whose property has the fence right now, protect their property on which they've been paying property taxes, on their full width of property all this time? How can, how can they protect their property line? And, and then what happens if, in fact, that neighbor two pushes this issue and goes to court, gets a judge to agree, and now neighbor one's property is a non-conforming width in the resulting relocation of the property line? I mean, there are some layers here that, that I think could be very troubling in this and other situations.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll just answer your questions, but first, it's not within the city's jurisdiction to resolve who owns property. These kind of issues come up quite frequently, actually. It's not within our jurisdiction to decide who owns what, we just don't have that authority. But to answer, to get to your questions, there's a statute that sometimes applies that says you can obtain ownership of property by adverse possession. Adversely possessed property, you have to, the possession has to be open, hostile, continuous, and exclusive for fifteen years. That statute does not apply to all property. It does not- It does not apply to torn's property. But there's other doctrines where it's possible, even in torn's property, to have a property line changed. There's a doctrine of practical location of property lines, and a court has to sift through these things and decide who owns it. But what they would say, what the court would say, for example, if, but that fence was there more than fifteen years and all the other criteria were met, is that you own it today, even before, when the fifteenth year ended, they, they came into ownership, period, they own it. Now there are lots of arguments and lots of issues in resolving that. For example, I'm just making this up, because I don't know the situation there, if I give you a letter and say, you know, you want to put the fence there because there's a tree you want to go around or avoid, I can give you a letter and say, go ahead, put it over there. I'm not giving you the property, you have my permission to put it there. In that case, a judge may very well find that that occupation was not hostile, was not adverse. There are lots of factors and lots of arguments, but we can't resolve who's right and who's not right, who owns it. But if they own it, they own it, period. And if, if that means the other property is undersized by our current zoning ordinance, then it is, and it's a legal non-conforming conformity problem, depending on what occurred. And we can't write an ordinance to really rectify this, because I'm sure in the city of Edina and every place else, there are all sorts of situations where people, when they put up a fence, maybe, especially years ago, did not hire a surveyor before they put up their fence. They just said, well, I know it's about here, and they put up the fence, and that can change the property line. And I can give you a ton of case law on the subject if you're interested in the statute, and I got all of it here, not all of it, I got a lot of it, so. Have I answered your questions, or did I miss one?
No, I guess, I, I totally understand that this is a civil issue and not an issue that we are going to decide here. And at the same time, after hearing from a resident, it, it makes me, I, I know of a situation in my own neighborhood where this exists, and, and just wondering how, you know, how do you handle situations like this? I suppose it's on a case-by-case basis. One, it's a, but, but two, in the past, we've actually had property line proposals, and we approved one tonight in the consent agenda.
We moved it.
We moved it. We, we moved the, the lot division and, and we adjusted that back lot line.
Changed the common property line.
Right. Now, so we do make lot line changes here.
You can, you can approve them, sure.
But they have to be brought to us by both property owners, do they not?
Well, they have to, yeah, the property owners have to petition you to do that.
And therefore they have to be in some semblance of cooperation.
I would assume so, yes.
Yes. Okay, well, unfortunately, this is creating a, a situation for two otherwise happy neighbors who now are not happy with each other, so hopefully, hopefully they can resolve this. So I'll take any suggestions anybody has on this and, and be able to pass them along to this property owner.
If you're, if you're really concerned when you buy a property, is that fence that thinks going with the house or is not, is on, you know, which side, is it in the right place? You can hire a surveyor, and the surveyor can tell, tell you, if the surveyor gets it right. It's very unusual to do that.
Or they could put on a blindfold, spin around, and point in the direction of a lawyer, because at every other house in the dino, you've got a lawyer that can help.
Well, I, I guess a final question on this could be, the fence is in the property of neighbor one, could they take ownership of the fence and just say, we'll just take it down, or we'll replace the fence? And since it's on our property, we'll just consider it ours and handle it. Can they do that?
Self-help is not something I recommend. We don't want people getting into fights in their backyard, I mean, as far as, I forget who's one and two, but if the fence has been on number two's property for over fifteen years, they might have a pretty, they may have, and I'm not going to say who's right, they may have an argument that they now own it and it is their fence. And if property owner two comes in and takes that fence down, then property owner one may end up suing property owner two for damage to their property.
Okay. Okay, okay, I see. All right, thank you.
Member Bennett.
As someone who had properties surveyed within the last five years, possibly one of the most cost-effective resolutions is a survey, and if there's dispute, both of the property owners could have, could each have a survey done, but I would imagine that would be less expensive than litigation.
Well, they've both recently done landscaping, and they do have surveys, which shows the fence clearly in the property of neighbor one.
So their surveys agree?
Yes.
Responding to some other concerns that have been raised in correspondence, just finding out where they get addressed, we had a repeat request for a stop sign on Brookview, does that get re-refered to the Traffic Safety Committee?
Excuse me, council member, yes, that was brought back in, in front of the Traffic Safety Committee, I don't remember which month's meeting that was, but it was looked at again, and I, I'm unable to provide you with the information of what the outcome was at this time.
But we will look forward to seeing an, a future Traffic Safety Committee report.
Yes, I can circle back and listen to some correspondence on that.
Okay, thank you. We also had correspondence from a resident on Dublin about wild turkeys. It appears that in this instance, they are on private property?
They are, and I did have a chance to talk with Officer Hunter, who was our animal control officer, and he has had direct discussions with that resident about turkey harassment, and encouraging said harassment.
Encouraging.
Yes.
But on private property, if I'm correct in understanding, it would be the, the option or responsibility of the homeowner to contract for?
That is true, just like?
Animal control.
A raccoon or any other animal like that.
Thank you. We also have had correspondence, and I've had a telephone call regarding particularly residential rebuilding. I know we were looking at a code of conduct for contractors, would it be possible to put together some information that can contribute to the public's understanding of what it is that their neighbors are and are not entitled to do in terms of construction timelines?
What? Do you want to give them just a little data on what that is?
That certainly could be something that we put together, some kind of an informational flyer. It might be something we want to discuss, is we've got that draft that's floating around of the Construction Management Plan.
Yes.
We'd like to hold a work session with the council at some point in the near future, and perhaps we could discuss, discuss some type of a flyer or some kind of a handout that, that addresses those issues.
I thought the public education piece was contemplated within the discussion already.
But again, I think there was a focus toward constructor code, contractor code, sometimes it's not necessarily a contractor, it could be a resident remodeling their own home. There appear to be a couple of projects within at least my walking radius, which is about five miles, that have been on hold, they're proceeding at kind of a stop and start pace. And there is a book called What to Expect When You're Expecting, possibly we can have a brochure that's what to expect when you're remodeling, or what to expect when your neighbor is remodeling or rebuilding, that could just compile the references to code. This is what, what is the law in the city, so that people know what to expect and they, they can time their concerns or calls accordingly.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
I don't, that we also have some rules that you have to do work within a certain amount of time, or you have to get an extension to your permit. We have had residents doing work that have abused that, I guess, and have been reported before, so there, there are some existing rules.
Right, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking to be able to have available for residents at a rather, you know, a reference to the website or a brochure at City Hall, something that can help them with an understanding of that process. We also had a piece of correspondence that was questioning the purpose of seatbelt laws, and I had some very helpful information provided earlier today by Chief Long, Officer Olson, and then also Bob O'Brien, who's been before this council before. And first of all, seatbelts are the most effective means of protecting oneself from injury while riding in a vehicle, they are not superfluous. In a crash, odds are six times greater for injury if a motorist is not buckled up. In, in crashes, where it is known whether or not seatbelts were used, over fifty percent of the fatalities are of people not wearing a seatbelt. Thirty-six states have, as Minnesota does, a primary seatbelt law. Primary seatbelt laws have helped you, um, seatbelt compliance in Minnesota rise to ninety-two percent in 2009 and 2010, and fatalities are going down every year in Minnesota in spite of an increase in miles driven. So I feel like there's a lot of evidence that supports their use and supports, um, public enforcement of their use. Finally, last, last, another traffic-related concern, with the construction season, we do have some detours, we also have some signage, and some of the signs say roads, road closed, some say road closed to through traffic. There is information in the Minnesota Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices that a chapter named Temporary Traffic Control Zones, and I would like us to be looking for some clarity on that. I don't recall as a council that we've approved this signage, even though it's regulatory signage?
No idea. I think we've left that primarily to staff.
We've gone on what signs we use for different?
Well, we normally do, but in the case of road constructions, we haven't.
They're temporary.
Well, they are temporary, but I think that their meaning is unclear to residents. There's no process that's, that is conducted for their approval, they're installed, what does it mean? Does it mean, for instance, that you can't cross Forty-Fourth Street, because Forty-Fourth Street is under construction? So at intersections where there's a physical capability of crossing, and Forty-Fourth is obviously under construction, does that road closed for construction mean that you can't cross through that intersection? I've had more than one call on this. So looking for, again, some clarity, I think, the question is whether indeed we're allowed to install them without approval, we have been doing that. Information that would be publicly available and possibly even a webpage that could be updated, where there, I know we get city extra postings about where there's closure, but some kind of daily bulletin with whatever minor updates are required, that would inform people what's closed and what's not, as they move around the city. It could be helpful from a public safety standpoint, it also could be helpful to some of the businesses that operate in our community, dry cleaning, delivery, and the like. So those are my thoughts.
You're looking for a list like Mindot has. Mindot's got a list like that right on its front page, and it tells you what's closed, what's not, what's delayed, what's going to be, what are the time-sensitive projects going on during the day in the, in the Twin Cities area, so people can just look at where they're going to go and compare it on that list of where the closures are and where the tie-ups are going to be. So I, I don't know, I, I have no idea whether that's something staff can do or has time to do, but that's, I think, what you're asking for.
That's the second thing, that is the second thing, that's the end product. I'm also looking for a policy that we could follow in road reconstruction projects going forward, where we have, rather than sort of an after-the-fact response to concerns that we probably can anticipate based on past practice, that we have that menu in place before we start the project, that we know what, at what points we're going to move to Plan A, to Plan B, and that we have, so clear policy and then a clear process that's transparent and people know what, when regulatory signs are installed, that they've followed the proper process in being approved. And then finally, yes, thank you, that list of identifying where there are traffic restrictions.
Mr. Sullivan, would you comment on the, the strategies that you use on, on road closure, signage, and the feasibility of notifying people on a, we do it now on a weekly basis, telling them what's open, what's closed, what's going to be open, what's going to be closed, changing that to a daily process in these areas where we're doing road reconstruction?
I'd like to comment on a few of those questions. You're correct, we do city extras, both to our neighborhood projects that are signed up, as well as our road closure, web, city extra website as well. Those are done more or less weekly. To do a, a continuous daily type of, like Mindot or some of these other organizations, I think, I suspect we'd more dedicate it staff time, I'm assuming Mindot, obviously because they cover off on the whole metro, use multiple staff members as, as full-time positions, kind of managing that. It would take staff time, I don't know to what degree we would need to be involved in that, it could certainly be looked at, but we'd have to be mindful of the staff time and the flexibility that's associated with some of these activities that do happen, weather delays, other issues that kind of pop up may, may make that a little more challenging, but certainly could be looked at. When it comes to how we kind of handle temporary traffic control signage, staff has always taken the position that when a project is approved by council, you're approving the feasibility report, you're approving the contract, you're approving, in essence, the plans and how it's going to be constructed, and, and within that is the, the rules of the Minnesota Uniform Traffic Control Manual, which allow us to be able to put up these lane shifts, lane closures, much like what we do on a daily basis as we're painting our crosswalks in the morning, our crews are getting down at four and five AM, and this time you're going to try to minimize traffic delays, they're putting up temporary traffic control signage, a very similar, those are short-term, four-to-six-hour type closures, we're looking at four-to-six-week type closures when we do like a Forty-Fourth Street. It, it, I think it's, it's good to know too, that the signage that does go up, it does have some regulatory meaning associated with it for certain, but it's not like our police department are, are sitting on these locations, they're more of a complaint-driven basis, when our, a police task force would be up there reviewing these, either driven by staff, by resident or council request, sometimes even contractor request, if they're seeing a lot of cut-through traffic, we'll go up there, and if we believe it's, our police department believes it's a public safety matter, they will, they will address that with the residents as they see fit. That's kind of how our current policy or practice has been, has been working. So Forty-Fourth Street, an example like that, a little bit fluid situation, but, you know, when these projects start, we always have the first two- or three-week acclimation period, and no different than on Seventy Street. It's some heartburn for a while for all of us, but things settle, settle down to a, a new, a new normal. So I can talk in more detail at a later date with you, some of the nuances associated with that, but I think that's, that's the overview, if I can encapsulate some of your questions.
Sure. A baseline question is, for someone traveling in a north-south direction, can Forty-Fourth Street legally be crossed, or can it not be crossed?
You know, our position is, I think, yes, it would legally be able to cross, say you're at a Wooddale or one of these other cross streets heading north and south, you know, there is activities that actually happen at the intersection, and, and in theory, our contractors should put up a road close sign when there's literally going to be equipment or operations there that should prevent anyone from crossing at that location. However, we also use the road closed to through traffic sign, when it's more of the, you know, we recognize that ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the traffic should not be on those roadways, just the people that need to get to their home. So they're kind of used a little bit interchangeably, maybe some clarity in the future would be helpful, but in reality, you know, it's best for everyone in the public safety aspect of both the residents and, and our construction workers, for efficiency and safety of just using those detour routes, using the other options. Most everyone that travels these roadways knows the other routes through the community, they're no secret, and so I, we would ask that they use those posted detour routes to avoid it, it's going to make your commute actually quicker in most cases than trying to get through a muddy, bumpy, potentially hazardous situation.
Sure, and again, the question wasn't can Forty-Fourth Street be traveled? I think that, the, the fact that it can't is clear to everybody, the, the question was whether it could be crossed legally.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Member Swenson? Member Spring?
Manager Neil, do we have an update on the Community Health Board? Did they, did they meet and discuss the full meetings scenario?
I believe that they did, but I'm not, I don't recall what their answer was. It's, it's coming.
And then the, the ETC, have they? And then the ETC, have they completed the work on the France Avenue review? Is there anything coming forward? France Avenue corridor review.
Thank you. Councilmember Sprague. Yes, they actually have, in our last two meetings, have had discussions about France Avenue corridor and the greater importance of that corridor and crossing that. I need to bring forward to this group kind of a recommendation of the ETC. It basically encapsulates that the ETC is... Would like to look at, or is recommending to council that we continue to look at better at-grade pedestrian crossings for France Avenue between Crosstown and 494. That was really their number-one priority in their review of that. They looked at some of those previous studies that were done along the corridor, both by URS and the one by Hennepin County as well, and really just thought that... And then, of course, the Nymark Creek Trail as well, and really thought that additional at-grade peg crossings was, I guess, their number-one priority. So I need to be forwarding that information onto you in a formal, for information, in the back-of-your-packet type of scenario, anticipating doing that for the August 3rd meeting.
And at-grade crossings in lieu of pedestrian bridge?
I think the opinion of the commissioners was that although they didn't want to discount grade-separated crossings, that... And they didn't want to discount the dollars that are certainly potentially on the table for the city to use, they stressed that in addition, or as a number... Priority 1A would be at-grade crossings. In their mind, priority 1B, knowing the funding's available, would be to explore the pedestrian crossing, grade-separated pedestrian crossing in more detail and find an appropriate location for that.
Thank you. Tonight, at the work session on the Sports Dome, we talked about doing a facilities inventory sometime in the future. Do we have any work sessions available, keeping in mind that we'd like this drawn in parallel to the park board's work?
We have a full schedule of work sessions through the month of August, through the month of September. We have a couple tentative subjects penned for October. So that's what I would tell you today. I just, in fact, need to have some discussion with Mr. Caprios to figure out how we might position the discussion with the park board, and also then figure out... That'll help us figure out about when that item might come to the council.
Okay. Today, this morning, I was representing ADINA on the Metro Cities Municipal Revenue Policy Committee. Learned a lot of things about the very dysfunctional relationship between the state and the cities, which has not been resolved this year. Interestingly enough, the performance management system that we opted into, which allows us to opt out of levy limits, was rejected by some cities because they were afraid that the state in the future will benchmark resources based on the results. So I found that to be interesting. We, on the other hand, are confident going forward that we will do well in that system. I will also be attending, on our behalf, the Municipal League of Cities Local Economies Policy Committee, which will be like this commission... Our committee this morning will meet three times this summer. So thank you for the opportunity to do so. The Decision Resources Survey, great to have that data available, and I'm a huge proponent of the biennium or biannual surveys. I definitely don't want to rest on our laurels and make assumptions. I think we have a duty to be a data-driven organization, and I think we're all on the same page there. And so 92% of the city residents thought we were going in the right direction. I'm gonna add myself to that list, mainly because I'm so impressed with our staff that we do have, getting to know them more, and their qualifications and their dedication and their longevity here at the city. Certainly, our city manager, who has been an open book and a by-the-book kind of guy running the city transparently and with a lot of input, and he spends a lot of his time meeting with various constituencies, and that's just the right, for me, the right leadership, and also very knowledgeable about best practices and how to run an efficient, effective organization. And then also, this body, the short time I've been on here, I'm impressed by the diversity of the group in terms of their interests, our diverse geographies, and the people we connect with, our experiences, and our diverse viewpoints, and I think it makes for excellent decision-making. So again, it's an honor to be serving among these members. Finally, the Quality of Life Survey found that 90% of our residents found the quality of life to be excellent. And I... We do have premier facilities and great city services, and we snowplow on time and better than anybody else, and great staff and so on. But to me, the greatest asset of the city is our residents. We have such talented and generous people. And I say that because of the group tonight that was working on the Sports Dome, all pro bono with their time, and regardless of how you feel about that issue, their dedication and their gift of their time and their talent was pretty impressive. And same with all the people that serve on our boards and commissions, the people that are spending a year on the Grandview District process. I mean, where do you get this type of human capital? It's just... It's a rarity, and that's, to me, is what makes this town so great. That's all I got. Thanks.
Good comments. There's a lot of wonderful people in town working to make this a great place to live. So with regard to the letter from Ms. Pankratz about being unsatisfied with the yield sign, wants a stop sign, one of the things that continues to bother me is that one of the obvious solutions here is a sidewalk petition. I'd like to see that from the neighborhood. I'd like to have them be encouraged to file a sidewalk petition so we could do an engineering analysis on it. The safest... The best way to keep their kids safe from cars is to put them on a sidewalk. You need to separate people from traffic. So we've proven time and time again that sidewalks are the best strategy, and regardless of what's decided on the stop sign, they ought to have sidewalks in that neighborhood. All right. Other things, July 11, we had the Regional Council Mayor's meeting. We had an interesting presentation by a guy named Tor Doll, who's a longtime economist at the U. He's an expert in productivity. Talked about productivity enhancements in the state that would eliminate a lot of these economic challenges that we have right now. And he's gonna come back again and talk about leadership, how we get there, how we make our state more productive. Also had Mike Lineley there from Greater MSP, an organization that we have joined, and talked about some of the activities that they are engaging in in anticipation of a rollout of this whole economic development strategy sometime early this fall. Center for Transportation Studies at the University of Minnesota had a strategic planning meeting over there on the 18th, and then also went over to Metro Cities to talk about some of the transportation issues and general government issues with the committee over there. So I'm glad that you're getting involved in that. That's terrific. And then just a reminder that on the 21st, two days from now, the Small Area Plan Team for the Grandview Square District meets at the senior center, so folks should be encouraged to go over there and participate. One of the other things I really liked seeing from the survey was the notion that a vast majority of our residents felt like what they had to say about how our town is directed makes a difference, and that we were transparent in the processes that we used. As Members Sprague said, we can always improve, and we will work to improve. We won't rest on our laurels. No one ever has here. We always are moving forward, trying to make it an ever-better place to live. But that was encouraging. I think when you think back about how things were less transparent long before we were around, done in a different... You know, decisions were made in a different fashion. But it's nice to see people recognizing our attempts to be more inclusive and more engaging of the citizenry. So that's all I have. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll start by answering Councilmember Sprague's request. The next meeting of the Community Health Board is September 19th, and that's when they will take up the 12-meeting question. They have not addressed that issue yet. So that's coming up. Mr. Wallen, Mr. Glanzner and I met with the President of Waldorf Nevin's Cleaners today. Is that audible?
That was an audible sigh.
And we reached what I would characterize as a tentative agreement about how to... How for them to keep current on their utility bills and also to pay their delinquent bill. We are putting that in a format that our city attorney has recommended, and we'll bring that to the council on the 3rd of August for an approval, for a review and possibly an approval. I had a discussion today with Steve Clark.
Well, could I... On that issue of Waldorf Nevin's... Roger, maybe you've looked at this, too. Would they be willing to give us a confession of judgment, admitting that they owe us that much money? In the event they default, we can just take the confession of judgment and try to satisfy it?
That's something we haven't... Mr., I haven't approached them about it. Right now, it's certified. Was on. Right now, the biggest amount of it's certified to taxes. And as long as the outstanding taxes are less than the value of the building, we are secure.
Yeah. It may be a built-and-suspenders kind of approach, but it strikes me that with the amount of money they owe us, we want to make it as easy as ourselves as possible. Getting a confession of judgment would be kind of a good thing to have.
We'd have to talk to them about it. We'd have to reconstruct the agreement. Sure.
I met with... All right, excuse me. I had a discussion with Steve Clark today from TLC regarding the grant funds and the plan to accept the grant funds. And there was some discussion, I know originally that they had to have a response from us by the end of this month. I talked to him about our timeline and that we have an upcoming joint meeting with the Biocadina Task Force on August 3rd, and he gave us until August 3rd to have that decision made. So we do have a little bit more time and at least one more council meeting at which to make a final decision on how we're gonna spend those grant funds. I have a couple of meetings set up next week with Center Point and Excel to hear their ideas and concerns and suggestions about franchise fees. Council hasn't approved or disapproved of that, but just to gather some more information for you. Our new Assistant City Manager starts August 1st. We're beginning to get her orientation session ready to go, and there will be a lot of work for that to get going. But she will be in attendance on the August 3rd council meeting, which is on a Wednesday, I should remind you. And she'll be there to introduce herself. I'll introduce her. On August 4th, I've had some discussion with Bob Hoffman from Minnesota State Mankato. Bob is Vice President? Is he provost?
I think he might be a Vice President.
President of the Outreach Services, I think, from Minnesota State, but he is the...
He's kind of a development guy, and I don't know exactly what his title is.
He is an official, let's call him that, from Minnesota State Mankato. And he has been the lead person, I think, in promoting the ADINA campus here. And we have set up a time on August 4th from 9:30 to noon to tour that campus. And if anyone on the council can do that or is interested in doing it, call Terry Wilson and please, and we'll get you on that. And we need to CC to them so they know how many people are coming.
Did you ask Terry to send an email out on that?
I will.
I'm in on the record.
Yeah. You're in. Thank you. That's Member Sprague. We'll make sure you're in. But 9:30 to noon, so they got a lot of things to show us and are really excited to show us that. Performance review, my six-month performance review, the deadline to get your materials into Harry Bruhl, if you wish them to be kind of aggregated with the rest of the material, is Friday, July 22nd. And I think that's all that I've got for you tonight. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That prompt anything else?
Yeah. Thanks to the 9% of people that spent an hour on the phone doing the survey. That is commitment.
All right. Very good. We stand adjourned.
Could be one of our new...